August 2nd, 2016, Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All selectmen are present. Mr. Kalender is participating remotely on the phone. I apologize for the late start. First item is interviewing candidates for the Zoning Board of Appeals Full Member Position. There are three individuals. Mr. Walker has withdrawn his name. He withdrew his name a couple hours ago for consideration for the full member. I'd ask Mr. Damiello, Mr. Nicholson, and Mr. Williams if you can come on up and just share this table here with the three mic-- two microphones. We're going to try to do this efficiently and interview you all en masse. First of all, thank you for coming this evening and specifically thank you for putting your name in to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a position which greatly affects the future of our town. And there are very few voluntary, non-elected appointments have the type of power granted to the ZBA. And it's because the committee can essentially permit someone to do something legally and avoid compliance with adopted ordinances. So it's a tremendously important position. It's a tremendously powerful position. It's one right now that we make the appointment for five years, but you should know we have been discussing the possibility of revising that term downward to be at least consistent with the term that the Board of Selectmen set. It's probably one of the appointments that we need to be as careful as we possibly can. Not to say that we're not trying to be careful on all of our appointments, but this is one that we really need to do our due diligence on. And so with that preface, and again, thank you all for being here. We have read the material. rather than doing it individually so that everybody in the pub, everyone here and anyone watching would hear the same questions over and over. They're just going to hear it once in your responses to that. So with that, I will turn it over to anyone on the board who wants to go first with any questions. Mrs. Fanna?
I'll ask a general question of all of you, but, well, Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams would have a different answer. Why the, Mr. D'Amiello, why the interest in the ZBA?
So I have, I really have no preconceived notion in regards to any of the topics that are going on. I really just felt like it would be a good opportunity to get involved in the town, understanding that, to your point, there is, this is certainly a very important position within, within the town and the board does carry a lot of weight in terms of the decisions that they can make. I feel like I bring an unbiased and kind of, well, not to say others are illogical, but a logical approach to, to listening and decisioning on topics such as this. And I felt it would be a good opportunity to get involved in, in, in help, you know, drive some of the, the future here in South Park.
Thank you. I'll follow up to that. Have you attended any of the ZBA meetings?
I have not.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, I've been an alternate member for the past year and I would say nothing in my experience thus far has dissuaded me. I, very similar to what Mr. D'Amiello would say, I feel like I have something to offer to volunteer, as a volunteer. I do feel like I'm unbiased. Some of the, some of the topics interest me quite a bit. Having an engineering background, it's interesting to see what the plans are for, for some of the applicants. But as I said, probably most importantly, there's nothing that's happened in the past year that would dissuade me from, from being interested.
Have you participated on any of the hearings?
Yes, I have.
As an alternate member?
Yes.
An example, please?
The application for the medical marijuana dispensary, Ken's Foods, application to add on to their facility, were two of them. I might be drawing a blank on the third one.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nichols, same?
Thank you. My interest is similar to the, the interest from when I ran for planning board back in May. I have a background in real estate and real estate development. I'm familiar with how people go about presenting to the planning boards and ZBAs. I still firmly believe that there's a disconnect between those two groups and the ideas that I had of wanting to bridge that gap some way still remain, in my view. And I think, I think there's a way that those, those organizations can better work together and serve the town for the right kind of development that fits within our, our guidelines and our plans, our planning codes and benefits the town. So I've been a volunteer for a number of years since I've moved into town, both on shopcy and recreation, and view this as a step to be a little more involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, Mr. Nicholson, one of the issues that it seems to follow you where you go relates to your background and your experience in terms of building and with developers. Can you address that and that potential conflict if you were to be assigned to this position?
Yeah, I am a real estate developer, so that being said, I understand what goes into a presentation to the ZBA and planning boards and what people are trying to accomplish. I do not currently, and do not currently have any plans to develop anything locally. I'm working with a nonprofit that does affordable housing in Cambridge. And so I view it as very unlikely that anything I'm doing would cause conflict with something going on out here, as I am very much focused on Cambridge and Metro North communities. There could be a potential that there's an overlap of a consultant or an engineering firm or something along those lines, but if that were the case, then I'd probably disclose it and allow an alternate to take my stead on that one.
One question for all of you. It seems to have come up more often than not recently with regards to conflicts and scheduling that reduces the number of available members to sit on a particular hearing. Given that this appointment is a five-year appointment, I realize none of us have a particularly accurate crystal ball, but in terms of your time availability, have you taken that into account? And the, essentially, you'd meet at least once a month for the next five years. Again, somewhat daunting, but it looks, shortening that time period up, do you anticipate any issues relative to scheduling?
I, I don't see any issues with, with scheduling in, in terms of being available once, once a month. I think that would be a reasonable commitment and able to accomplish that. Any of the preparation work that would be required going into a meeting and making sure you understand the topics at hand?
Yeah. I should have qualified my statement. And, you know, the, the meetings or the hearings are just one part of the job. There's, there's usually at least five-fold commitment of time in preparation for the meeting. So if you can include that in your response as well. So you, you have the available time to do the, the amount of work necessary to prepare for the hearing and to commit to the hearing?
Yep.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah. I, I, I don't see where the one Wednesday a month would be a particularly daunting commitment. I, I do occasionally have travel that's related to business, but that is pretty, is not that frequent and I do have a lot of say over when that is. So I am able to schedule around that. And as I said, I didn't, I didn't find the load in being prepared for the meetings in the last year to, to overwhelm me. I think I have the availability.
I as well think that, you know, a meeting in a month and even if it's more occasionally based on desire or needs of what's in front of the town would be very doable. My kids are young, one about to go into high school, one in just about into middle school. So I'm going to be here longer than five years. So.
Mr. Shea?
So Mr. Nicholson had addressed the conflict question. I'm just curious, Mr. Williams, Mr. D'Amiello, do you perceive, you know, personally or with work that you have, would you envision any potential conflicts as well with potential cases that could come before the zoning board?
For me personally, no. I, I mean, I, I live here in the town and my, you know, my work is unrelated to any type of, you know, the real estate development or building activities. I wouldn't see, you know, again, I don't have a lot of, you know, I don't have a lot of relationships with, you know, builders across the town or developers across the town. I, I wouldn't see any conflicts. Like I said, I really come in with sort of a unbiased view and a real, no real preconceived notions about anything. I think that's one of the, the things that I would bring to the table in terms of a positive in this is that, you know, there's no connection to, to any of that.
Yeah. My, what, my work is, is unrelated to, to any real estate development or building. I don't have relationships with, with build, with, with developers. So I, I really don't, don't see where there would be a lot of, a lot of conflict there.
Now, just one other question if I may. So I'd say that Mr. Williams has addressed it with the comment that with his year as an alternate, he hasn't seen anything that's, that's going to keep him away. So clearly there've been a lot of high-profile projects that have come before the ZBA. And obviously you have interest. You wouldn't be here sitting at the table in front of us if you didn't, but I'm just wondering if you've kind of taken the chance to envision yourself being on the other side of the table and looking out and do you, do you see that there are any, you know, concerns that you would have about any of the projects that are ongoing currently, others that may come up that may be just as, as high-profile?
I don't, again, going back to my, I guess, what I said earlier around, I, I think, you know, in understanding what the zoning board is about in terms of what it's doing and, and, you know, listening to, you know, various, whether they're individuals or, you know, corporate entities that are applying for some sort of variance, I think you need to, to be able to go into that discussion with, with just a, an open mind and an unbiased opinion and be able to listen to and, you know, understand what they're asking for and how it applies to the bylaws and, 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 you know, the town regulations as it relates to that. And, and I think that's what it's, you know, that's what abouts, that's what the, that's what the process is about. So from, from my viewpoint, it, it really becomes a matter of interpreting their request relative to the, to the, to the, to the regulations or bylaws that are in effect and, and, and working with a group to make a decision. And I, and I think that's something that we do in our everyday life and in the jobs and the roles that we, you know, in, in my role, I work in the financial services industry, in information technology, and there are certain rules and, that apply relative to building software and developing software. You need to make, and you need to, you know, kind of make decisions. You don't always, you don't always follow the rules exactly or sometimes you need to, you need to, you need to vary from that. I see it, I see it as certainly as an opportunity to get involved in something that I could, you know, that I would be able to, I feel, contribute to.
I don't think I would have any issues in, in seeing what comes before the board. I obviously have been on the other side where, you know, the decision isn't always in my favor and that's the way it works sometimes. My general philosophy is that, you know, in a position like this, one is to protect the bylaws as much as possible, but keeping in mind that there needs to be a benefit for the town. And how you address that, how you communicate the, the view of a give and take on, you know, a particular thing for a benefit is really what would make it a far more, or a far less antagonistic public to board situation.
Mr. Semino?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is just if you could go down and, and tell the board whether, and if so, who has encouraged each of you to, to be sitting here. You know, in other words, were you approached by somebody that said, hey, there's an opening, you should, you should go for it? And if so, who, who that was?
I could start. I came up and, I, I actually live across the street from Andrew Dunnington. So I came up in conversation that there was an opening and I thought it would be interesting to get involved.
It, it was something that was encouraged by, I, I'm, I know Karen Finelli and she was aware of the opening. So that's where I came from, as I disclosed last year.
For me, I-
There's no wrong answer, by the way. It's just informational. So.
So for me, I, I had mentioned to several people that I was still interested in serving in a greater capacity within the town. I did not know there was an opening and Lee Barnalini actually gave me a call just to let me know that one might show up. Just to, as an FYI, he did not necessarily say I should or shouldn't do anything with regards to that. So at that point, I submitted an application.
Thank you. So my other, my second question, not related, is sort of rhetorical, but I'd like you to do your best answer, which is, is the ZBA a, an instrument of economic development in town? And if so, you know, why? If not, why not? Why don't we start down here since you get to go last so much?
Yes, I do believe it's an instrument of economic development within, within the town. As I mentioned in a previous answer, you know, as you weigh where the specific wording in our zoning bylaws are being requested to be altered in terms of something being allowed to go in, you know, you weigh that against what the benefits to the town are. And, you know, in the case where it's a business or a restaurant that will produce higher real estate taxes for the building and the location that it's going in, you know, sales tax and whatnot that then benefits the town, those sorts of things are potentially some of the benefits. You know, again, maybe not enough of a benefit to allow the request, but it's definitely something that can come into play and something you could look at to allow the town to have a more balanced differential between commercial real estate tax revenue and residential real estate tax revenue.
Well, it, I, to a certain extent, it is, obviously related to economic development. It is a balancing act because obviously, you know, applicants are bringing something before the board that, you know, potentially generates revenue, but it's always a balancing act against, well, how does that fit within, you know, where this is going to be located? What are the negative impacts of that? And understanding, you know, why they're there with a, with a variance or a special permit request. But yes, certainly, you know, weighing economic benefits of, you know, what it is the applicant is bringing before the town has to be part of the decision. But I would say as long as you, you haven't crossed a certain threshold where it's, you know, become a detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Going third, it may sound like I'm repeating what the other two have said, but, but I think, I think along the lines of what Mr. Williams had to say is that in, in starting Mr. Rooney's opening statements around, you know, basically protecting the interests of the town and making sure the decisions we're making are in the best interest of the town, that can be, I guess, there can be some economic development that, that results from a decision that we make, but I'm not sure that, that, that is where, where, where you should base your decision. I think you need to separate and look at first, what is the, what is the impact to the town? And then secondly, you know, if, if there's, there's economic benefit or development that results from that, then I think, you know, that, that is certainly something you would want to consider. But for me, I, I see the zoning board as being sort of the arbitrator of the, the bylaws and, and making decisions based on those bylaws and, you know, taking those other factors into consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kalenda, I apologize for assigning you the second to last position, but that's the-
That's the consequence of not being here. Dan, do you have any questions?
I do, Mr. Rooney. So we've heard about managing any personal conflicts, which is good. My question is how would you manage conflicts and promote effective communication with other boards and committees?
So why don't we start in the middle this time? Dave, Dan, we're starting with Mr. Williams.
That's, that's a, that's a good question, Mr. Kalenda. To, I suppose the, the, the best thing is to, is to always continue to be as transparent as possible in your, in your deliberations. I, I, I honestly, it, it is a little bit of a trick as to how all that relates in, in some cases to the planning board. Certainly, you know, communication of concerns from the planning board to the ZBA need to be, need to be, you know, thoughtfully and then very clearly stated. And it, being appointed members by the selectmen, I would say the communication clearly needs to go back to the selectmen as well. How to, how to improve on that? It's, but it, what gets, I, what I suppose gets a little tricky here is you do have open meeting laws. So I, I'm tempted to say you, you do have communications outside of, outside of your own individual meetings, but you do have to, have to kind of tread carefully there. So I, I suppose the best thing is the sharing of all the, all the concerns, particularly with the planning board and to the board of selectmen in an open fashion, which would, to me would mean, you know, communication or sharing of minutes between the boards.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yeah, actually, what I would like to see and what I've seen in other municipalities that I've been involved in is an advanced team, a triage team, call it what you will, where one member of each of the approving boards, the planning board, the zoning board, conservation commission, whoever's ultimately going to sit down and, and weigh in on a given-
whoever's ultimately going to sit down and, and weigh in on a given plan, is, are brought together as soon as any one of those commissions or boards is presented with something. What that allows for is a much cleaning, cleaner and clearer information flow of what's coming, what can you expect, what are your, you know, where are you going to play on this, where are we going to play on this? So that there isn't a, you know, a turf war later on after something's already been done and some, one of those boards' hands are tied. So that's something I would, I would very much like to see.
Mrs. Damiao.
Sure. So it's, just to step back and clarify on the question that he, that, that was asked. Are, are, were you talking within the zoning board itself or within the overall structure or, or both?
Well, I guess it could serve in either way. I mean, I was really, what I'm looking for is how would you manage any conflict and really promote that positive communication between the ZBA and other boards? So not necessarily conflict within the, you know, the ZBA itself, but conflicts that can arise and communication that needs to be enhanced with other boards and committees.
So just, I guess, equating it to my own experience, having not been involved with the zoning board before, working in the, in the field that I do and the role that I do, which is essentially a project management type role. A big part of what, what I need to do day in and day out is manage expectations. And the way that you're able to manage expectations is through, you know, frequent communication. To Dave's point, being transparent and, and, and making sure that you're, you're providing the right level of information to your stakeholders. In this case, that's the folks sitting on the Board of Selectmen, the planning board. And, and there are, there are methods and from a project, from a project management standpoint or methodology that you can employ that, that will, you know, that can help to facilitate that. So I think that, you know, we could bring some of those ideas to the zoning board as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dan?
Nothing else, Mr. Rooney.
A quick question, and, and I'm going to exclude Mr. Williams from this question because you've already performed this in your capacity as an alternate on the board. So making everyone happy in most cases is impossible and probably shouldn't be tried. And one of the most difficult aspects of zoning is the need to balance various often competing interests in property owners and residents. In either of your backgrounds, Mr. Nicholson or Mr. Damiao, have you had any experience in dealing with any similar type of competing interests? I realize there may not be interests between property owners and residents, but can you just give us any information which would give us a, perhaps a, give me at least a level of comfort that that type of conflict is something that you've seen before in your past experience and something that you'd be prepared to deal with moving forward? And why don't we start with you this time, Mr. Damiao?
Sure. So an example, working in the financial services industry for the, for the companies that I've worked for, we have our own company interest and we have our customer interest. And being in an IT organization, you have requests coming from the customer that you need to balance against the interest of either corporation or the company. So there are times when you need to tell the customer that, you know, what they're requesting or what they're asking is, is not necessarily the best approach or the right approach. And you need to provide them with alternatives. And sometimes, you know, you, it just can't, you know, certain things can, can't be accommodated. So there is that, that similar type of conflict of interest. You know, if I think of the town as the corporation and the, and the residents as the, as the customer, you know, you've got that similar dynamic.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholson.
Yes, I deal with that a lot, being a real estate developer and obviously in different municipalities. But, you know, in, in all the situations where I go into a planning board or zoning board of appeals, you know, it is that balancing act of property rights and then neighborhood development and how you go about bringing the neighbors into the process as early as possible so that by the time you get to these boards, ideally as many of those major issues are, are already taken care of. You know, for example, I'm, I'm looking at a project in downtown Cambridge and it is likely, once we have our initial designs and thoughts, that we'll start meeting with neighbors probably a year before we actually present anything to the city and start that process in a, you know, in terms of presenting anything to the city formally. Because again, it's, you know, it's something that we think will benefit the overall neighborhood, but we need to be able to communicate that. I think that's, you know, again, that communication and that, that give and take between community needs and property rights is, is an ongoing thing and it's never going to be solved completely, but it is something I deal with regularly.
Well, I, I want to thank the three of you for putting your name forward and in particular for putting your name forward for this, this position, which is, as we all know, it's a challenging position that requires dedication and commitment and a lot of work. And, and based upon what I've heard, it's unfortunate that we only have one position available because you all three are immensely qualified to, to assume that seat. I assume that two of you will leave here this evening not as happy as a third, but don't want you to take that vote as being a vote that we don't think you are able or qualified. It's, it's, that's not the, that's not the import of the vote. So I, Mr. Shea, do you, do you have a motion or does anyone have a motion and we can move on from here?
Yeah, I would, I would, Mr. Chairman, unless Mr. Shea does.
Go ahead, Dan.
I mean, as you said, Mr. Rooney, it's clear we have three qualified individuals for this position. You know, I too want to thank them all for volunteering for our town. I mean, this, this town only runs, you know, by volunteers and, and we're fortunate to have three for this one position. I believe that, you know, with that, Mr. Nicholson really would provide a, you know, an immediate positive impact on the ZBA. I would move that the board vote to approve him as a full member.
Is there a second?
I will-
Ma'am, you, ma'am, ma'am. First of all, you don't jump up and say something. You, you are recognized and then you speak. The fourth member has withdrawn from consideration. Well, that person did not submit their materials to us in time.
Well, we didn't realize it would be voted on.
Well, that's unfortunate. Is there a second?
I second Mr. Kalenda's motion.
Further discussion?
On Mr. Kalenda's motion, I have to ask Mr. Nicholson a question though. Well, I, I would assume we'd have to, I'm going to coach my words here. You serve on CHOPSY, you serve on the Housing Trust and you serve on Recreation. All make recommenda, recommendations to the ZBA, you're going to have to resign from all of them. CHOPSY cannot make recomanda, recommendations to the ZBA for consideration. Housing Trust the same. And I believe Recreation has gone before the ZBA for consideration in other areas. So that would be a condition of my support.
Further discussion. Let me, let me just say, Mr. Williams, you have performed as an alternate. And I don't really like that term as an alternate because the reality is you're much more actively engaged as an alternate. And you've attended the meetings and you've participated in the hearings and you've been ready to jump in as a full member as an alternate. So if we were to appoint you as a full position, then we'd have to find someone that is doing that alternate position better or equally as good as you are right now. So my feeling is I'd like to keep you as an alternate. So that's, that's, I just wanted to address that from me to you. Mr. Damiao, you've never applied for any other type of volunteer, but this would be your first foray. And, and I think that brings some refreshing and again, thank you for that, sir. I appreciate that. Mr. Nicholson, one of the concerns I had is, is the concern that Mrs. Vaniff had. Is that you have, you have charted various courses through CHOPSY and Recreation and there would be voids associated with the departure in those positions. Is that something you reflected on a lot before this evening? Because my sense was when Mrs. Vaniff was making those comments, you almost had an oh no moment. That maybe you had not really given that as much analysis as, 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 as one might have thought you might have.
The, the question came up when I was running for planning board as well. And I, I seem to recall that it wasn't necessarily required that I give up those seats. But it would be something where as those, as if Recreation were to be, present something, I would need to recuse myself from that particular vote where an alternate would then step in.
Yeah, I think it may be a little bit more encompassing, more broad insofar as there may be alter, all other decisions of the ZBA, which may not directly be brought by Recreation, but that could impact Recreation. So I don't think it's as finite or as, as surgically focused as you may think it is. But any further discussion on Mr. Kalenda's motion?
I would like just to comment on this, the point that's currently on the table with regard to Mr. Nicholson. I mean, Mr. Rooney asked you a question early on about the apparent conflict that is, that comes with what you do in other towns. And I would just say generally that if you were to be appointed, your tenure would, would be scrutinized. Not, it, it wouldn't end here tonight, it would start.
Yes.
So the idea that you would be, I, I, I don't think it's even a question that you should resign from those other boards and committees. Because you would need to be extra careful to, it's not your fault, it is what it is, to, to eliminate as much as possible any concerns or questions about, you know, ulterior motivations. I'm not suggesting any of that exists, but the point is to alleviate any, anybody else's ability to suggest it. So.
And it's not the first time I've asked that. Actually, there's a member, former member of the ZBA sitting in this room that I asked him to step down from CHOPSY and he did before the conversation went any further.
So, Mr. Rooney, if I can chime in, I'm not, I, I don't know, and I hear what Ms. Vaniff and what Mr. Semino are saying. I don't know if that can be a requirement, maybe it can be. I don't know that it can be a requirement that an individual resigns from the other boards if it's not an actual requirement that they resign from those boards. I think if, if he were approved as a full member, one of the first orders of business would be going downstairs and asking the town clerk or whomever else may need to be asked. If there's an actual conflict, then surely, yes, you know, he would have to resign. If it's not, then I don't know that this board can require him to resign from something that he's been duly appointed to and is actively serving on. He would only have to recuse himself from those issues if and when they came up. That would be my understanding.
We have in the past, I have, and it's, it has happened. What I'm suggesting, Mr. Kalenda, is that Mr. Nicholson is well aware of his actions that may be taken as a member of CHOPSY. I've served on CHOPSY for over 20 years. There is a conflict there. They make recommendations, recommendations to the ZBA on projects, any project. And as far as the Housing Trust goes, that is affordable housing, which is a lottery, which is also involved in affordable housing. And they work closely with the town planner.
So, and, and just to be clear, I, I adopted or agreed with Bonnie's original rationale. And I agree with you, Dan. I'm not, I'm not elevating this to a legal requirement. It's simply a measure of whether I would support with my vote, which is a little more subjective.
If I may, I've been on CHOPSY for quite some time. We just recently completed our updated housing plan for the town. It's fully, fully staffed, I believe, pending a new selectman. You know, stepping down from that, I think, would be something that is very doable. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I just recently got on that because of my involvement in CHOPSY. If I were no longer on CHOPSY, it would make sense for someone else on CHOPSY to take that seat. With regards to Recreation, I would say I'm not necessarily opposed to stepping down. I would like to understand more about it. I'd also like to make sure that they are able to get somebody else to fill that seat. We did go quite a while with an open seat and I would not like to necessarily put that department in a situation. I would be happy to step down as chair of that committee immediately and allow our vice chair to step forward. And then, you know, again, if, if we all deem that it's more of a requirement, I'm happy to step down and just would like to make sure that that commission isn't negatively impacted in the short term.
So we have Mr. Kalenda's motion. It's been seconded. There's been further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain?
I'm just concerned about the issue.
I think it was clarified.
Well, I don't think Rec was clarified. I think, I don't think he's agreed to step down from Rec tonight.
Let me, let me suggest this, Mr. Nicholson. Based upon the concerns that have come out of this board this evening about your dual role, and I understand your concern about leaving Recreation open, but I, I would strongly urge, strongly suggest that if you assume this position on the ZBA, that that be, if not your first, your second resignation on Recreation. Because the last thing we want to do is appoint a member to the ZBA, a board that is very much in the public sphere of discussion and have issues relating to dual memberships on committees. You know what? It, this board, your, that board doesn't need that. So I, I would encourage you and I would ask for a commitment here before we vote formally that you would do that.
I'm thinking about it for a second.
Sure.
I'll commit to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Mr. Damiao, thank you, sir. Mr. Williams, again, I hope neither of you see this as a vote against you. Essentially it is, but the reality is, is that we certainly would welcome your continued participation, Mr. Williams, as, as an alternate. And I think we're going to try to change that wording because I don't like the word alternate. It's much more participatory than that. And Mr. Damiao, I would encourage you, there are many openings in various boards and committees in town, that you not just put all your eggs in the ZBA basket. Thank you. Thank you all. Congratulations, Mr. Nicholson. Next item in discussion is scheduling a special town meeting. Couple of things on that. We had talked a while ago about having a special town meeting for a couple of different items. One was the Main Street Reconstruction Project. And the second was to discuss the Public Safety Facility Building. I can let everyone know that the Public Safety Facility Building discussion is not going to be ready for a special town meeting, but we're going to have to address that at our next April annual town meeting. And I'll have more to say about that on, in a, in a few minutes, hopefully no more than that, when we talk about the Public Safety Facility. So what we need to do is we need to set a date for a special town meeting. We have a citizens petition, so we would open the warrant tonight. Obviously, once we open the warrant, then that petition comes in. I would suggest that we would close it perhaps at the end of this month when we have our third meeting in August. And we just need to discuss dates. Now, we have coordinated discussions already with Principal Lavoy at Tradia as to some available dates in October that we could u, utilize the facility. holidays, the dates of which and the commitments of which have been a bit more refined for me this evening. So we're essentially looking at a couple of different dates in October. One would be the 18th, and I believe Mr. Hagerty, that gives him a certain amount of indigestion, given the closeness to which the November election falls thereafter. And the other possible date would be the 4th of October. Is that correct?
Yes.
Those are the two available dates. So, Mr. Hagerty, do you need to say anything other than the fact that obviously you would prefer the earlier date? Is that right? Do you need to say anything more than that? And the reason you would prefer it is because of the November election, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's essentially a 14-day difference between October 4th and October 18th, and my feeling would be to acknowledge the concern that Mr. Hagerty has and aim for the 4th of October. That's my personal recommendation.
I'll go with that.
Mr. Samino?
I don't feel strongly about either date, so that's fine.
Mr. Shea?
Yep.
Mr. Clender?
Yeah, 4th and 5th.
Okay. Do you need a vote to open the warrant or anything of that nature?
I can set the town meeting.
All right. So, Mr. Shea, could you offer a motion, please?
I move that to just open the warrant for that special town meeting.
To be held on October 4th.
Yep, for a special town meeting to be held October 4th. Do we need a time at this point?
At 7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Chairman Report. Well, first of all, before I get into what is published on this agenda, I just wanted to acknowledge the Police Department, the Fire Department, the DPW, and the members of the CERT team. As everyone in this town knows, we, a storm of some, at least in my mind, epic proportions, at least in my neighborhood, went through, knocking down trees, power wires, and causing all sorts of havoc within a span of 10 or 15 minutes, which could have easily resulted in repercussions for many, many days. But the actions of those that are employed by the town, and in particular, those that are volunteering with the town, and I'm speaking specifically about the CERT members who went out with yellow tape and roped off roadways that were impassable, put up flares, sat there all night long, it just shows what a testament to the type of town that we live in. So I wanted to thank them, in particular, the volunteers, but also those paid employees who went, at least in my opinion, and talking to them and watching them work well above and beyond any expectation that, like I said, that storm came through quickly but had the potential of having days of lasting effects, and kudos to them. The second thing is, I want to acknowledge the receipt of a citizens' petition relative to the member of the ZBA. We had an executive session meeting this evening where we sat down and we had an extended discussion with Mr. Bartolini. Mr. Bartolini has suggested and proposed, and this board has agreed, that affected at their next meeting, which I believe is, the date escapes me, I believe.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. There will be a reorganization of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and a new chairman and a new co-chair or vice chair will be elected for the Park Central Project in particular. And then, at their second meeting this month, there will be a reorganization of the entire Zoning Board of Appeals with a new chair and a new vice chair for the board on bank. Mr. Bartolini made this suggestion as being one which the town should consider for the interests of the town, for the good of the town, insofar that the discussions of late have seemed to focus on him as an individual as opposed to the actions of the board as a group. And in all honesty, I think that makes a lot of sense, to the extent that residents have concerns, and there'll always be residential concerns, whether it's with this board or with the Zoning Board of Appeals. But to the extent that residents have concerns, those concerns should be focused at the entire body, the entire board, as opposed to an individual. So this board thanks Mr. Bartolini for that suggestion, thanks him for his willingness to put the town before any sort of badge associated with the chairmanship, and that those actions will be conducted both at tomorrow meeting on the ZBA and then at the future August meeting of the full ZBA. So neither of those were on the chairman's report, but I believe they were both matters that required some timely discussion. Update on Park Central Flag Road, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shea because, as people may know or should know by now, I am unable to participate in the discussion on that topic. Mr. Shea?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Rooney. First update I was going to offer on this is, for those that have not heard, that MEPA has extended the deadline to receive comments on the project. So the MEPA office will be receiving comments through Friday of this week, August 5th. Not knowing that that deadline was going to be extended, Mr. Purple had gathered all the correspondence that the Board of Selectmen had received relative to this project, and we had already submitted that to MEPA by the previous deadline that was set. But if there are residents or others who do have comments on the draft environmental impact report, that is before MEPA are currently for review, comments will be received until this coming Friday, August 5th. That was essentially all that I had. I know that there have been some additional correspondence that we have received relative to the project, I think, since or July 29 submission to MEPA. I assume that we can forward those along as well?
We can make a supplemental submission this Friday.
And certainly still out there that the remaining four members would need to discuss at some point in time at an upcoming meeting would be recommendations relative to the Flag Road safety report, and whether this board would recommend action on that. I don't think that tonight is the time to do that. I think that that ought to be a specifically identified agenda item at an upcoming meeting, and we will do that. That's all that I had at this point.
Thank you. And just so that people know, the Board of Selectmen did write a letter, as Mr. Shea referenced. That letter is available, I don't know if it's physically on the town website, but it certainly, it is? Okay. So the residents can see what the Board of Selectmen's position is relative to this development, and it should be accessible, as Mr. Purple indicated on the website. With regards to the Public Safety Facility, this is an example, probably one of the best examples, of the speed with which town government moves. I just wanted to provide everybody with an update as to where we're at on that. We created a Public Safety Study Committee in January of 2014, and they have essentially, they essentially did their work within short order. They were officially appointed in February of 2015, and Mr. Hamilton is the chair, conducted, if not weekly, then monthly meetings, and they came up with their space needs assessment and presented that and worked with our expert consultant, and they presented several options for the facility, and ultimately voted to recommend building a new facility for police and fire with an estimated project cost of about $21 million. As part of that study, it became apparent that the existing footprint where the Public Safety Facility is presently located is too small for a new facility which is being designed to serve the town for the next 40 years. So we're building a project, and we want the project to last long after most of us are, certainly after I am sitting here, but after most of us are participating in these discussions. So we began negotiations with St. Mark's, and this board appointed Mr. Shea and myself, and we've had four meetings or five meetings with St. Mark's. And as with any negotiation that involves a potential purchase or transfer of land, the individuals needed to make those discussions are never at the entire meeting. So St. Mark's had to report back to trustees. We, of course, report back to our board. We are still in negotiations. Nothing has happened, and of course, all of our negotiations are going to be subject to a vote at town meeting. We expect, again, I think I made this promise once before, and I was unable to keep it, but we expect to be able to have some more substantive information or substantive proposal to put forward within the next month. Again, I think I've said that before, and I think I've failed to deliver on that, but based upon our best projection as to where the negotiations are, obviously, we keep funneling it down, funneling it down, and getting closer and closer. But the best projection that I can give is that within the next month, we'll be able to have something more substantive to report on. That's the best I can do in terms of updating you. Obviously, it's not much of a substantive update, it's more of a process update. Mr. Purple, Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of items that aren't listed here as well, so I'm going to jump around a little bit because I do have both chiefs here, and they both kind of fit into the report. The first thing, I just want to echo your comments regarding the storm that came through on July 22nd. Just so people understand, and the people that were affected by it certainly do, but in the immediate aftermath of the storm, there were about 2,400 homes that were without power. There were about 14 to 16 streets that were closed. There was extensive tree damage, cemetery especially, and one of the buildings that housed the town SCADA equipment for our water system up by the Oak Hill Water Tank was crushed, and that did affect the ability for our water stations to communicate with each other. By Sunday, mid-morning and that, just about all power was back, and that was through the efforts of Chief Morrow, Chief Paulus, DPW Director Karen Galligan, all of the emergency personnel, as Mr. Rooney had said. But I also want to, you know, thank National Grid for their efforts as well. I think it helped tremendously that this was not widespread in terms of a number of communities. It seemed to be that ourselves in Westboro and Northboro were the hardest hit in the area, but it gave the crews the ability to focus on our area, and things came up much quicker. Certainly, I think Mr. Samino was surprised as to how quickly things came back, you know, at his house. So I just wanted to thank everybody, all the CERT members as well that participated. Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, just on that note, I'd also...
Chief Morrow, the Fire Department Emergency Management Director. I'd also like to thank Mr. Purple, Mr. Parent from Facilities. They also came in that night and assisted with us. Mr. Samino was at the fire station. We gathered all the significant department heads that night because we didn't know what type of situation we were looking at. I was anticipating a long-term event, as Mr. Samino can attest to, and I was very surprised. If anybody knew, the telephone poles came down across the causeway on Boston Road. I left here about 3:00 in the morning, came back at 6:00 to do a damage assessment, and they had just about all the poles set up. So I was very surprised, and I'd like to echo Mr. Purple's acknowledgement of National Grid. They did an outstanding job. I was a little concerned that we were going to get the help, and they were right there and helped us out. So also like to, again, thank Mr. Purple for his efforts in coming out, and Mr. Parent and everybody else in the CERT team members that did a great job, so.
Thanks, Chief. Just to give the board an update on our Green Communities status, the board recalls that we are moving towards becoming recognized as a Green Community by the state. There are five requirements. After this evening's meeting, assuming that the board takes positive action on the policy on fuel-efficient vehicles, we will have four of the five requirements completed, and the energy baseline reduction plan is being worked on, as we speak, by Mr. Parent with the utility companies. The submittal date for the next round of Green Communities is in October, and I can say with all certainty that we will be prepared and we will be on that list, and then the town will be eligible for grant money that we can use to apply to some of these energy reduction items. I do want to acknowledge John Parent. His name seems to come up a lot because he's got his fingers in a lot of things, and we appreciate that. Also, Carl Guyer and Kelly Brown, who works for the Green Communities Division for the state. She's been very helpful in putting this all together for us. To give the board an update on hiring processes that we've got going on, and it seems that we have quite a few. It seems as we close one out, we seem to get two more. The 15-hour Youth and Family Coordinator position that was approved at town meeting, the interviews are being conducted next week to fill that position. Our new IT manager, Tom LaFlame, is beginning work his first day with us, will be August 15th, so we're excited to bring him on board. The maintenance position in facilities, interviews are being conducted this Friday, and hopefully, that's going to move along fairly quickly. The DPW position is for the Assistant Mechanics position. It's in the final stages of appointment. I believe that when Ms. Galligan returns from her time off, I believe that she'll be making that appointment. And our Payroll and Benefits Clerk, we believe that we are all set with that, and we'll be bringing that to you at your next meeting for appointment. So that takes care of the hiring pieces. Regarding the Main Street project, Ms. Galligan is going to be coming to the next meeting to give the board a little bit more of a robust update. Again, she is away, but she did provide me a couple of quick bullet points. The comment period for the draft, 2017-2021 TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, has ended. This is the plan that contains the Main Street project for the town. Several boards and committees and residents have submitted letters regarding the project in order to keep it, asking that it be kept funded on the TIP, as well as this board submitted a similar letter. And a portion of the Main Street Working Group is working to determine the parameters of a non-TIP-funded project. I think, if you recall, that was part of the discussion, is what a non-funded project would look like. And so there's a subset of the Working Group that is looking to put together a fiscally responsible project that hopefully can be compared apples to apples with the TIP project, so people will understand what that will undertake, if people decide, you know, if we decide that we want to forego the state money. And finally, I wanted to provide the board an update on the medical marijuana dispensary that has been given the special permit for 255 Turnpike Road. The plan is now before the Planning Board, and they're doing the site plan review. And I know that Chief Paulus has been working diligently with the applicant and as well with the Planning Board to ensure that the project is going to meet his criteria. And so I'll just ask the chief if he wants to come up and just give an update as to where things stand.
Evening, everybody. Had a chance to do a lot of research over the last several weeks. Did two site visits... Did two site visits, one in Brockton and one in Brookline just last week. At the, uh, site visit in, uh, Brockton, Administrator Purple accompanied me. Uh, one thing that struck me of, uh, both locations is that the, uh, the companies have invested a lot of capital into the properties and, uh, we'll expect no different. The other part of it is that it's an evolving process that's going on, but I also think it's a positive process. I think, uh, we might've got off to a slow start, uh, not arranging, uh, exchanging enough information, uh, before they submitted the, uh, the initial plan, but we've certainly caught up. Just for the public that might not have seen the, uh, July eighteenth, uh, Planning Board meeting, we, uh, altered the plans and, uh, Comcan has agreed to, uh, a lot of the recommendations. They include, uh, eliminating the trees and vegetation on the western side embankment to create, uh, clear sightlines, uh, eliminating the exterior windows and doors from the building except for the very front, and I'll be going over a plan with them to make sure that those windows and, uh, doors are secure. One thing that, uh, was very important they agreed to is that the, uh, the traffic pattern will be a complete horseshoe drive around the building. So it'll be one-way traffic when you come in and then you exit until you, uh, come back out onto Route Nine. I believe the plan right now calls for about twenty-one parking spaces. I know that was of great concern. Uh, and looking at the other facilities, I think we're on par. I think, uh, Brockton had about eighteen, uh, was somewhat of a problem. In Brookline, they only have thirteen spaces, but it's right in the middle of a city block. So they have a lot of on-street parking, a lot of foot traffic, so it's not very comparable, but Brockton is, and, uh, they said that they've had no problems with around eighteen spots. They also stated the same thing. If they did have problems, they could arrange for the employees to park on an off-site location. So I think that we're on track there. Uh, some of the other items, uh, they've agreed to a fence. Uh, I'd like to see eight feet all the way around the building. It won't go in the very front of the parking lot, and then I'm also looking at possibly making that feet, ten feet in the, uh, the direct back, which would border the neighborhood. So that's still, uh, up for some discussion. Just going over some, uh, some other items with, uh, lighting. Uh, and one thing at the Planning Board Meeting that was, uh, certainly a point of discussion was the Sally Port idea, which didn't appear on the plan that they submitted. Uh, certainly kudos go out to Selectmen Shea and Samino for, uh, um, doing their due diligence and showing up at the meeting and, uh, supporting everything that we suggested. Uh, that goes, uh, to Selectwoman Faniff too at, uh, earlier meetings, who, uh, um, doing their due diligence. Just like to thank all the board members and everything that we do at the Police Department. You're always there to, to give your ideas and support us. It's much appreciated. Uh, I also forwarded some information and, uh, was suggested at the Planning Board Meeting. This has been out in the public as some of the dangers that it's an all-cash business. Uh, I've submitted some documents, uh, that that's changing going forward, uh, when, uh, myself and the administrator at Brockton, they estimated that right now they're kinda just getting off the ground with, uh, using other forms of non-cash alternatives of payment, and, uh, their records show that they're about sixty percent non-cash. So I would say, I would anticipate that that's gonna increase at these businesses going forward. And, uh, you know, that's something that's important. It just makes it less attractive, uh, for the criminal element. I do have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow at nine o'clock to go over some other ideas with them that I've learned on these, uh, these site visits, but it's been productive so far. I was hoping that that meeting would take place a little sooner so I could present it here, but that wasn't possible, but I think we're, we're moving forward in a, a good direction. I think that, uh, most of the exterior, uh, we're pretty much done with, and now I'm on to, uh, just some, uh, some things on the interior that I wanna make sure are up to par, and, uh, I, I think, uh, we'd have covered all the bases and I'll feel very comfortable going forward.
Thank you, Keith.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one other item, uh, and I just would, um, ask the board's, um, indulgence. Recently, um, we had a, uh, a passing of a former employee, Cal Morrow, who, um, was, uh, was, uh, an employee with the Department of Public Works, um, for fifty years, um, and I just wanted to, uh, ask if the board would, uh, entertain a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Items number three and number six need to be tabled.
But microphone, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, consent agenda. Items number three and number six need to be tabled.
Could I ask that number one be tabled also?
Okay, and number one will be tabled.
Uh, actually, could we just discuss number two separately?
Absolutely. We're, we're, we're slowly whittling them down. There may be no further, uh, so why don't we, uh, discuss number two, approved policy on fuel-efficient vehicles. Mr. Shea?
So, uh, certainly, in general, I'm supportive and I, you know, obviously, Mr. Purple had touched upon this going a long way towards putting Southburn in a position for, uh, future grants and financial rewards, but the one comment that I did wanna make on this was, uh, under the exceptions category with respect to police cruisers. There's a line in there, "However, we commit to purchasing fuel-efficient police cruisers", and, and it continues. And my concern, I guess, is with including and making a commitment to fuel-efficient police cruisers at this point, and my reason predominantly for that is safety. I mean, clearly, the vehicles that our, uh, police have currently, you know, the Ford Explorer-type vehicles, we have lost two of those this year due to, um, rear-end collisions on details.
They've been replaced.
That have been replaced, but the vehicles themselves have been struck and totaled, correct? And officers inside those vehicles have been injured and lost time as well, and I would venture to say that had we had a, you know, more fuel-efficient vehicle that was less safe, that potentially those injuries that those officers had suffered could be much worse, so...
Brian, if I could just interrupt?
Yep.
I think the only vehicles that manufacturers are selling now are so-called fuel-efficient vehicles that could be purchased by the Police Department, so...
Okay.
I think you're, that the term "fuel-efficient" has, has been watered down as the time has gone on, so I, I don't know if there's a universe of vehicles out there available for police purchase that would not come under the "fuel-efficient" designation. Is that...
I think that's accurate.
Okay.
Mr. Rooney, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the purpose also states that, uh, to be used whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable, so I, I would think, yeah, I would trust the good judgment of our, um, police chief and, and all of us in town to ensure that, uh, you know, safety is, is paramount.
Any other comments on the consent agenda? Mr. Shea, motion?
Uh, I move consent agenda item number two.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number four and five, Mr. Shea?
I move consent agenda items four and five.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That takes care of the consent agenda. Uh, item six, public comment. Mr. Stivers.
Sam Stivers, Seven Presidential Drive, a member of the Advisory Committee but speaking as a private citizen. Um, I was interested in Mr. Purple's comment about the, uh, Main Street, uh, ad hoc committee and the subcommittee of that group. Um, I've not seen any of the meetings posted for the subcommittee. Uh, I think it's abundantly clear under the AG's, uh, open meeting law regulations that it explicitly includes subcommittees in those requirements, and I would urge you to require that committee, that subcommittee, to post those meetings and make them public meetings before somebody files a complaint with the AG's office.
Good suggestion. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Howard Rose, Two Bantry. I'd actually like to once again, um, raise my objection to even having a town warrant for this, this agenda. This was asked and answered at the last town meeting, and legally, I think that the town has made their decision. If the next warrant is going to be a discussion on an alternate as far as how we're gonna pay for it, that's fine, but to bring back the discussion of going back to the TIP project and asking again to ask for amendment main rights to take the property and make that, that's been asked and answered. I don't, legally, we have the right to do that again.
Yes, well, we have the legal right to do that. The selectmen can call for the warrant, we can put the warrant out in front of town meeting and we can, we can take a vote of it, so...
So every...
Legally, we're on, we're on legal grounds of doing that, sir.
If, I'd like, I'd love some explanation on that, 'cause what's the point of having the last town meeting? So if we don't like the answer, we're just to keep re-asking it until we answer it again? We had a vote, we asked for it. Again, if you'd like to move it forward as far as...
See how things change with regards to the medical marijuana. We had a vote and then we had another vote and things did change, so...
No, sir, we actually, that was voted on something completely different and that was used to post it. We were actually...
I'm not gonna engage back and forth with you.
And that's fine.
If I could just give you a very simple example...
Please, I'd appreciate that.
When we were building the schools, we went back multiple times because there was sixty-two percent in jeopardy from the state as far as reimbursement, so we tried to create a plan for these schools in town, as well as Algonquin when that debate was going on. We had multiple town meetings to save that funding, and now we have successful buildings with kids in them. A lot of us didn't benefit from all of the hard work. Our children were out of the schools, but now they're being enjoyed. So there is a reason to go back and there is a good example as to why we're going back. If the town decides they don't want it, that's fine, but the funding is there and we just wanna present it.
And I appreciate the funding and no one really wants to pay for this, but, uh, the question becomes what cost, and I think the town has spoke up on that. They're not willing to give up that cost to keep going back. Is that...
Sure.
Two more comments quickly. Uh, Mr. Purple, if you, I'd appreciate it, you made the, uh, comment that you collected all of the letters to send back to the state. I would ask you to do your due diligence and look at that. I sent a letter that was not included in that package. I've sent it to the state myself, but I would ask that it holds some weight coming as a larger package from the town. Um, I've actually sent it twice. I know I've got response back from, uh, the ZBA's board that they received it. I would ask that you just dig a little harder and make sure that all letters are included in the comments.
And I think I responded back to you as well, that, that that was an oversight.
Not seen that, but I've been away, so let me check my email.
Okay, and, and again, um, that, um, you know, that will be sent supplementally. I believe that the packet that is online, it has been added to it.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Agadi? You're not gonna talk about the town meeting date, are you?
No, but thank you for picking the fourth.
Yes, sir.
I wanna thank, uh, Pam Leffler-Swar, the Senior Center, and, uh, John Parent and DPW for helping us with the, uh, senior sticker program that we issued down there. Uh, a lot of those people helped us and we issued seven-hundred-and-forty-something stickers to the seniors that made a world of difference. Um, that was a good deal. Um, I do want to not talk about the town meeting, but just a, just a quick heads-up on something, um, to let you know, um, Mr. Purple and the, uh, chief and the building inspector and I talked about this, um, God bless the folks on Beacon Hill. A law was passed to create early voting in Massachusetts, which will take effect for this, uh, presidential election. That's the good news. Um, the bad news is they haven't figured out how we're gonna implement it yet, um, the nuances of it, how we do all this good stuff, and, uh, but the gist of it is, uh, we will have both absentee voting for the presidential election and a period of early voting, which is gonna confuse the heck out of people, but there you go. So, starting on October the twenty-fourth, people will be able to come to the clerk's office and actually vote on the spot. So what we plan to do is use the foyer, we have, we have to create a, a voting, a precinct, and we don't know whether we're gonna have five-hundred people or fifteen-hundred. We've looked at the states, it's, it's kinda interesting. It's gonna be a, I think that's a Chinese curse that you'll have an interesting life, but it's gonna be an interesting fall for us, but the gist of it is, uh, we're gonna get this information out succinctly to people once the state clarifies the rules, but the, the gist of it is people will be able to come in the building on October, from October twenty-fourth through, uh, uh, the Friday before, the November the eighth, and actually physically vote in the, in the foyer of this building. We may also possibly have this building open Saturday for voting on the Saturday as well. So, um, it would've been a nightmare for us if you'd chosen another date, and thank you for doing that.
You're welcome, sir.
And finally, I wanna apologize to people that continue to have difficulty using the online system to buy the transfer stations tickets. Uh, we are having a nightmare of difficulties with the vendor, uh, and we're trying to work our way through it, but it's kinda like a, a bad marriage, which I don't have, thankfully. Uh, we just have to get through it, and I appreciate the patience and the suggestions people have given to us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One more, one item before we adjourn. You'll see on the upcoming meetings, we are actually adding an additional meeting. There's gonna be a meeting on the sixteenth of August, the twenty-third of August, and September sixth. With that, motion to adjourn?
Uh, hang on. We had some, uh, couple of comments.
All right, I didn't see anyone else.
Yeah. John Green, Tentera Road. Um, I, I wanna inquire a little bit further about the Board of Selectmen, uh, excuse me, about the ZBA and moving the chairman around. I'm not sure that that really got the point, right? So, you know, having Leo step into a role that is no longer the chairman and have somebody else step forward as a chairman, I don't think was the purpose of the, uh, the, um, uh, information that you received from the, from the people of the town.
Well, that's, that's the way the board has voted to, to deal with it. We, we dealt with it, we voted unanimously to deal with it in that fashion, and that's how we're gonna go with it. I understand your concern, but that's the position this board is taking.
Weren't you, didn't you recuse yourself on this?
We didn't, because it was not just relevant to, it was not just specific to Park Central.
Okay.
The discussions with Mr. Bartolino.
All right, but I, I still don't think that you guys have kind of heard what the, what the people are saying in this, in this situation, and I, I hope you take note of that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Samino, you have something to say?
No. Um, the, the other comment I have is, is we've really kinda pushed off the discussion around Flag Road and the safety associated with the project. Um, I know that things are moving extremely quickly with this project and with the ZBA. Uh, we're, again, extremely concerned about the actions of the ZBA, um, so we would really appreciate it if you could set some time tonight to have a discussion around the safety of the project of Flag Road sooner than later.
Karen Schimkes, uh, Limburg Road. Um, again, I've spent the last twenty-five years of my career evaluating large commercial real estate sites, including access, zoning, uh, density, um, and FAR so forth, massing. I just wanted to th- thank you first for the opportunity to speak via public comments. I do have a quick comment observation on process and then, um, something I'd like to, uh, read into the record. It's very disappointing to me and disturbing, uh, the lack of transparency that's taken place here tonight. Um, I, we received this agenda from the Board of Selectmen less than forty-eight hours ago and, um, have still been able to, uh, garner some attendance here tonight in spite of that fact, and, um, there is no notation whatsoever in terms of, um, a vote actually taking place, so I, I apologize for earlier, but, um, again, because we were not aware that a vote was, um, going to take place, um, you have missed out disappointingly, um, and, and I think may have, uh, done a disservice to the town in terms of opportunity lost of other very qualified candidates, um, who could have, uh, stepped up and, um, played a role. Having run a board myself, I know, uh, it takes, uh, great, um, deliberation in getting exactly the right people on, on boards. You want people who, uh, have some working knowledge, have actual experience with zoning bylaws, um, you want the best possible technical skills on, on these boards, and people who can evaluate, um, procedure, have a certain decorum, um, but most of all and most importantly, have judgment and objectivity. Um, the first question I would've asked Mr. Nicholson was, have you had any past business dealings, um, with the applicant on Park Central?
No.
With, with the company or, I mean, that would've been...
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on, hold on, ho- hold on, hold on.
That's, that's just a question.
Ma'am, ma'am!
Yes.
Hold on. You may not respect me, but please respect the board.
That's not correct.
Just hold on one minute.
And please don't, please don't make any comment like that. Refrain from that kind of comment, please.
Ma'am, when I speak, please listen to me. We've already made our decision on Mr. Nicholson. You're not going to now question him.
Without, without the input from the people of the town who elected you?
We advertised this position for more than a month. People submitted their applications to be on this board.
It's not on the agenda.
What, that we weren't interviewing?
That you were taking a vote.
No, we're interviewing them s- this evening, ma'am. I'm not gonna engage in a back and forth with you. That decision has been made. Do you have another point to make, ma'am?
I do. Um, I work very closely with, uh, a gentleman and colleague, dear colleague, who is the, uh, has served for forty years as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Boston. So I know firsthand what it takes in terms of qualifications and the skill and the sensitivity that it takes in order to, to, um, that... that it takes in order to, to, that what I'm trying to get at is, the problem that has been led up to tonight, and there's no, there's no satisfaction from what has just transpired tonight, has been a lack of communication between boards and committees. There's no glue, gluing together this information. So, in other words, when you're looking at a 1,054-page report, a draft environmental impact report, you have to very quickly scan through that, recognize what you're reading, the importance and the inimportance of some items, and know exactly what might be wrong with it, and question it. And that's what I have seen lacking, this glue. I, I keep coming back to the same question, who's in charge? You know, who's that glue that ensures that if there are mistakes made, they recognize them in a report, or they, they can evaluate a large-scale mixed-use project correctly? Who's responsible? And now I'd like to read a letter into the record, please. July 22nd, 2016. Southborough Board of Selectmen, Southborough Planning Board, Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals, MHFA, regarding Park Central, to whom it may concern. Please incorporate this letter as part of the record in consideration of the above-named project. BOS. Please attach this letter to your response to local and state entities, including MIPA. Please see the following link from MassDOT completed studies page. Mass dot state, Mass, Route 9, Final Report, Chapter 4. The key part is section 4.24, it should actually be 5, on page 4.13, which states, left turns from the new connector road would be prohibited, 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 to reduce traffic on Flag Road, a narrow roadway which serves a residential neighborhood. I hope you find this information helpful. Now, this is a state report that has been sitting out on the state website for three years, and I'm, I'm wondering why, apparently, there's been no cognizance of that single sentence that seems to be in conflict with a 1,054-page draft environmental impact report. It's not in there, except for a very vague reference in the comment sections as a response to a letter from these responsible people, citizens who have raised legitimate concerns, legitimate questions. That's where it gets worked in. So that's my question for you here tonight. Why are these two pieces of information seemingly at odds?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Well, I, is there an answer?
I have no answer.
When are we going to put Flag Road on a, on an agenda?
Well, we were asked earlier to do that, and I think we all agreed we were going to do that.
We're going to have an agenda item for Flag Road. At the end of this meeting, we're going to date, give it a date.
That's great. Also, Ms. Fanaf, I want to thank you very much for opening this can of worms, I guess, if you want to call it that, but opening comments to the public, because I believe it was you who initiated that first BOS meeting that allowed the people to actually have a voice. I'm disappointed in the way that the meeting with the state had turned out, because that was actually supposed to be a meeting for us with the state, and, and it turned out to be a meeting with the developer and the state, and, and a member of, of BOS. But, you know, I, I'd like to request that maybe that meeting could happen again, but I want to thank you again publicly for, for what you have done. Also, it, it's very curious to me, and I'm, I'm appalled at, and it is a question that maybe for another time, but I'd like to know who named the streets up at this development, because it's so egregious in terms of, you know, you can't have, obviously, a sitting for a slack person, you know?
Well, I, if I may, I, I saw that for the first time the night that, can I? On this one, on this one thing.
Do I understand, the question is, who named the streets on the development that is not developed yet? Is that the question?
It's right on the plans.
Is that the question?
It's in the draft environmental impact report.
I understand, but is that...
So if you, if you reviewed it?
Is that the question, ma'am?
The question is, is...
Right. If, I'm, I think I understand the question.
Thank you.
Since I'm sitting here on the board, it would appear to the public that it was named after me. I immediately called the town hall the following day and asked who named the streets. They could use white-out if they choose and remove my name. It was brought to my attention, and had nothing to do with me. It was intended for my husband, who served the fire department for 47 years and retired as the fire chief, and his sister-in-law was a town accountant in this town hall for 30 years, and his brother was a building inspector for 20 years. It had to do more with the fact that the name had some semblance to a department head. If you look at the other names, they were all employees of the town. But I assure you, when I heard it, I called the town hall, I said, please use white-out. I don't need to be known on a map. I know who I am, I have confidence in that name, so if anybody objects, fine, you can remove it. But it was intended, the purpose was the names of the individuals that worked in this town.
Not at all, and I'm sure that explanation is reasonable and brings great relief to the minds of a lot of people, so thank you again.
All right.
Thank you.
I started for the first time when you started. You can call it Bonnie if you want, though. Thank you.
Anything further? Nothing further?
Motion to adjourn.
Favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney.
Mr. Kalinda.
Thank you.
Good night, sir.
Good night.